We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, 6:30 PM. Beth, do you have anybody that wants to lead us in the pledge, or should we just jump up and do it?
(inaudible)
Welcome, everybody. Okay, I think we're gonna start out with some interesting things happening at CMS.
He's waiting for his cohorts. I just haven't showed up, but the evening is really my pleasure to share with you some highlights from the Connersville Middle School. We really wanted tonight to try to share with you some opportunities that our students have that both challenge them and extend them beyond the typical curriculum. So, the first program that I wanted to highlight is our Advanced Readers. It's kind of our best-kept secret, I think. It was developed and facilitated by Cindy Newton, our media specialist, and students are invited to participate in Grade 7 and 8. Their invitation's based on iStep, and this next will be iLearn, their COGAT scores, which is a universal screener that we use at the elementary to identify gifted and talented students, and also their GPAs. At this time, I want to let -- oh, and this is Owen Naby. I had two other students that were planning to be here, but they had met and talked about what they wanted to share, just to kind of tell you a little bit about Advanced Readers and what it really is.
Advanced Readers are accepted and ordained into the program by hard work and high scores on many standardized tests. The program is by invitation. If you accept the invitation, the invite into the indigenous program, you pledge yourself to read five books of all genres, carefully handpicked by elder advanced readers. These books are set to expand the young innovative minds of the ones in the program. These books must at least have one of these standards: multiple eras, Old English or higher dialect, something that the children are unfamiliar with, and that's only to name three.
Okay, and like I said, Owen is one of -- this year, I think, we have over 16. Sometimes there's 20, sometimes 30. It just all depends. And one thing I do like to say about the Advanced Readers, not only do they read different genres, that they really take and analyze those books. Don't you have to write some summaries? What do those entail until?
We write summaries, and we have to summarize the book, and this year, Ms. Newton's trying to do something new, a video summary or something. So, that'll be a great new way to understand the book, and it'll be a great way to tell them what we've heard and why it is on the list, and how it stretches our minds.
Okay, and Owen actually was in 7th grade, and that's why I'd asked him and a couple other students to share since they decided not after 7th grade to continue on in 8th grade, because it is a challenge to do that reading on top of reading, and it isn't just reading they lack. Although, do you find that after you got pushed to try some other genres, that you maybe had interest in other areas you didn't think you had?
Yes, it's very interesting because they push you. She says that we're rubber bands, and she's here to stretch us. She teaches us new ways to learn and how the new genres help us, not just entertain us, but they teach us deeper understanding skills.
Okay, very good. You did fine, Owen. He was a little nervous about doing this. But since conception of the program, which started actually 2009, '10 year, the program has actually enabled over 17,000, and actually with this year, $20,000 worth of books coming into the CMS Media Center. And the way they come is that you got to take a trip at the end of the year, help to finance through our gifted and talented funding, and you went to Barnes &amp; Noble and tell a little, just briefly, of the experience there and what your responsibilities were.
There, we had to pick books that the new -- that the students at the school would like to read and would help them. So, we got about 150 to choose nonfiction books, stuff like reference guides, and then 60 for books of our choice, just things that the students would enjoy.
And it's been really a great asset. It was really the best thing. I wish if I had shared PowerPoint was a picture that I had when the books came back. Of course, they get first dibs on checking them out as soon as they get checked into the Media Center, if I'm correct, right? And they had these boxes, and it was just amazing to see these kids surrounding this box of books, trying to decide which books they wanted Mrs. Ganser to get issued into the Media Center's catalog. So, it's just a great experience, and again, it is for those that really want to be pushed and challenged. And so, Owen and I commend you for taking that on and for your appearance, supporting them. Thank you. You did fine. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, there's a question. I'm sorry. I have a question for you, Owen. What was a book you read that was something you would normally have not chosen?
Uh, "How to Kill a Mockingbird." I was never one for classics, but then that book was really nice.
Oh, that's good. So, do you think it will entice you to choose some other classics?
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you.
Owen, that book you just said you read was chosen the number-one book of all time on PBS Public Broadcast just recently.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
He's also a dream coat, so they keep him very, very busy. He's one of the lucky volunteers.
Soaks it all in, don't you? And a great student, too. Thanks, Owen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. The other program tonight I just wanted to highlight is what we call CMS Prime, and it's kind of the precursor to early college high school out here at CHS. It was in 2013 that the CHS was accredited as, with the honor of being an early college high school. And then following that accreditation, there was discussions on how we could include students in the middle school so that we could give them some identification with the program prior to entering high school. So, from that discussion and some research, CMS Prime was created with the purpose of early identification of students that may be candidates for the rigor of the college pathways provided in the early college high school program at CHS. So, tonight, I invited three seniors that were part of the very first cohort that was established from that inaugural year. I'm gonna invite the three ladies up here. We have Elise Bottomley and Lauren Thompson over here, and Caroline right here. They've all been in practices and swimming, so they've been very busy. I just asked them to just briefly share with you their journey, and hopefully, having that early exposure to the ECHS program through the middle school, and how this has impacted their lives and hopefully their future.
I'm Lauren, and I will be graduating with 39 college credits in the liberal arts or the general pathway. And my plans are to hopefully go to IUPY next year and do, go through the dental hygiene program, which is about three and a half years, and having one year done all of the EC classes will help a lot. And I was also an ambassador in the, is it called CMS Prime now?
Yes.
And that helped a lot because we did, we met a lot and learned how to do Socratic seminars, which are very helpful, which we do a lot in our high school classes now. And I think that ECHS helps a lot because kind of have a taste of what college is going to look like, and you can't rely on your teachers as much. It's more like you have to take action, and it's helped a lot.
Great.
I'm Elise, and I'll have close to 40 credits when I graduate, and I am in the liberal arts pathway, the general pathway as well. I plan to go to Ivy Tech, and I can take two more Taco U classes through the high school that are free, and I can go straight into the radiology program. So, I'll have my two years pretty much done.
And I'm Caroline Poe, and I will graduate with 41 college credits, and, well, that's in the science and math pathway. And I plan on attending IUPY, and I was a direct admit into the School of Science because of like GPA, SAT scores, and then like I had my prereqs done through ECHS, so that allowed me to take that extra step and go straight into my sophomore year. And ECHS just helps a lot because you have like, your college has to take all your credits. Like, if you're in a pathway, if you complete that, then they have to take those credits. And so, that helps a lot when trying to go to different colleges, and they like try to pick and choose some, but they really can't with that. So, that's like, kind of just puts you at ease when planning out your future.
I'll let, see if you have any questions or anything else before I-
Also saves parents a lot of money.
Yes.
The amount of money that Mr. Judd says that parents save every year at graduation is staggering. I'm sure all your parents are very happy about that.
State saves now a lot of money.
College loans.
So, currently, there are about 250 students at Connersville High School that are in one of the pathways, and are determining, which determines their required coursework, depending on whether it's general liberal arts, math, and they have three right now that are going forward. And I'm sure some of that 30 college credits or more. We will begin the creation of our fifth cohort this year. We actually have a parent meeting that will be December 4th at 5:30, so that is again on invitation. However, we also make sure that parents are aware. If their child was not invited based on GPA, their state assessment scores, and teacher recommendation, or the three criteria, they can still come, learn about it, and still apply. So, they don't eliminate anyone from application, but we go on that criteria for invitations. Invitations went out today, actually, for 90 students at the middle school, and there is a form that they complete, and the parent meeting on the 4th will give parents an understanding of what they could be encouraging their children to take part in. So, we're excited about being a part of this and seeing the numbers grow at Connersville High School. Really excited to see what you've accomplished through the process and what Mr. Judd's done with the leadership in that program.
Questions?
So, when you guys first entered this in your middle school, or some of your 8th grade year, did you have any idea of the amount of work it would take?
No. Junior year for anyone's hard, but like for us, it's especially hard because we have to take so many classes.
Four college classes at once.
Right. In order to complete our pathway. So, it was difficult, but obviously, we made it to the end.
Well, I think one of the concerns in the past, maybe not so much now, but in the past has been that kids that don't have access to those kinds of classes don't really know how to study when they get to college because they're not used to that level of intensity. So, do you feel like this has kind of made you focus more on your study skills and how you balance that load?
I definitely am still like learning to study. You can't like do it overnight. You can't take just one college class and be good to go. It takes several and years of learning to develop good study habits, and I know that personally, when we went into it, I didn't have good study habits at all.
So, for me, like, school was kind of easy. It became natural, so I didn't have to really study. And then like, like, high school rolled around, and I was like, better. So, they just really helped.
That's, I think, the studying and the being able to manage time are the key indicators of success in college, so I have no doubt that it does.
Part of the prime, the CMS Prime, that we've added to that since you've been through the program, is that last year was the first year we actually had our students in the program, have the opportunity to take the Accuplacer, which is what enables them to actually be eligible for college credit in those classes moving forward. So, they can actually start as a freshman with a couple college credit courses if they've met the Accuplacer's minimum scores. And I think Mr. Bottomley, who helps to liaison that through Ivy Tech, was there efforts to help us do that in the spring. We're amazed at how well our students scored and how many were already qualified to take those college courses and earn credit without having to wait to take it in the fall. So, we felt that was a step forward and try and provide some other college-type visits. So, yeah, because that was something you had to take after you got there.
You had to take it. So, I took a college class my freshman year, so I had to take the Accuplacer for that. It's difficult, but it's-
Yeah, I took mine my sophomore year, going into chemistry, and yeah, the Accuplacer is very difficult. So, as many times as you can take it possible, yeah.
You get three times to pass.
Yeah, and you want to try and go all three times, just in case.
Right. And this is just a math and reading is the two tests. So, that's been an advantage, I think, because we could work with them in the spring before they took it in practice, so they had some experience.
What was the name of the seminar you said?
Socratic seminars.
The what?
Socratic seminars.
It's basically throwing out a question and just letting the students-
Sit it over.
Right.
And that's what we do a lot, like, my college class. We do that every day.
We read, well, after we read an article, we all, we do Socratic seminars.
It shows you guys are comfortable up there, and you're well-spoken, and it shows. Good job.
We picked good ones, didn't we?
All right, well, thanks very much. That's all I have for the evening.
Thank you.
Ladies?
That was a talented middle schooler to take down the whole group here without his cohorts. Well, I'm sure that was not intended. Okay. Now, I would like to seek a motion to approve the agenda as it is submitted and amended.
Matt President.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. I'll call the same sign. Motion carries. If there are any patron comments on agenda items, we will see them, saying none. We will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular board meeting of 10:918 and the special meeting of 11:518, personnel reports, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, approval of the October 2018 claims, 51279 through 51605, and then a number of donations. A donation of $2,942 from the No Kid Hungry Campaign for the CMS Breakfast Program, a donation of $864 from Cruise for Kids for negative food accounts for elementary students, a donation of $5,000 from Fayette County Foundation for heart monitors for CMS, a grant of $8,843 from the Fayette County Foundation to be used for signage for WCC, a donation of 11 computers valued over $500 from Christie Family Dentistry for CHS. That's wonderful. So, I would like to seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I still move.
Thank you, and I hear a second. Thank you, Andy. Any discussion?
I'd like to just say one thing quickly. I'd like to extend our appreciation to the community. I mean, every month, it's something that they do for us. This month, it's over $18,000. So, thanks, community.
I'd like to point out, Mrs. Jacobs, I think the community doesn't really know as a whole that the food service program is considered a federal program. And as such, we don't have the authority, the board does not have the authority, to write off negative balances for students. You know, we would have to find another financing source for that. So, for these students, it's very helpful, the fundraising. While it might present a negative image in the community, people thinking, well, why are they trying to charge these kids who have negative balances? It's, we're sort of handcuffed because we cannot just write them off since it's considered a federal program. So, I just, I think it's important for us to share that message so people don't think it's like, oh, that bad school is trying to charge these kids. We don't have a choice, really, in that it's that federal program.
Yeah, so that's so helpful that people choose to donate to the food programs in particular. Okay, any further discussion? I would like to, oh, let's see. Oh, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. We already did the motion. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to the action items. Personnel report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Cirque.
Thank you. We have several. First of all, certified staff recommendations. Tim Davis, special ed teacher at Connersville High School, and Nancy Slickdine, elementary teacher at Maplewood. Classified staff recommendations. Carrie Bender, bus driver. James Burns, bus driver. Corey France, bus driver. Marvin Geisting, bus driver. Jennifer Hamilton, custodian at Grandview in Fayette Central. Erica Huntsman, educational assistant at Connersville High School. Sherry Jones, bookkeeper at WCC, and Greg Kiefer, mechanic at the Transportation Department. Tara Lee, bus driver, and Gary Lower, bus driver. Extracurricular recommendations. Jonathan Bittner, boys' head swimming coach. Brad Cutter, assistant varsity boys' basketball coach, and Taylor Isaac, assistant swim coach. Also, we have several recommendations. First of all, item number two, recommendation for approval of classified performance pay stipend and salary increases. Item number three, recommendation for approval of administrative performance pay stipend and salary increases. And I might say, this has been past-practiced. It's been the board's intent and the administration's intent to try to, once a teacher contract is solved and settled, that we try to do the same thing for the other groups in the corporation, which is kind of unique in some school corporations. And I know we're very proud of doing that, and we thank the board for that opportunity. Also, number four, the administration recommends the deletion of Fayette County School Corporation Policy Appendix 3.25E, salary and benefits for operational leaders, and those individuals, which are three, Director of Maintenance, Director of Transportation, Director of Technology, will be placed in the FCSE Policy Appendix 3.25A, salary and benefits for administrators. They have administrative roles, and we just felt it was necessary to move them into the proper position for that. And then finally, Teacher Appreciation Grant, local funding. That's something that was started last year in treating everyone similar to the tag grant that the teachers get, so the certified staff. And those teachers who are not highly qualified, that are qualified, will receive the same amount of money. And that's been something, again, that's happened in the past.
Thank you, Mike. I would like to seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mark. Any discussion?
I think this is a great thing for the corporation because we're spreading the wealth, and it makes it, everyone feel like they're part of the whole thing. Not only the teachers get a raise, but everybody that's directly involved with our kids. And I think that that's really important with the team building, that we need to have because we have to have that in here. It takes the village, and the village is us. And to show that appreciation, I think, is a really good thing on the part of the wanting to do that, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the board policy. Second reading and approval. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your packets, there are the three policies that I had first reviewed last month, and I did take the guidance and feedback from the board. First, we'll go over policy 5.291, which is the metal detectors. As we've talked about in the past, we did receive 12 metal detectors that handheld ones from the Department of the State, actually, the State, not the Department. And we had to create policy for that. So, I'm just gonna briefly go over the highlights of that. When we have reasonable suspicion to believe that weapons are in the possession of an identified student, administration is authorized to use the mobile metal detector to search the student. This will be conducted in private, and only school personnel who have been trained in the use of these, and we will work with our local law enforcement once this policy is approved to provide that training to our administrative staff. It also talks about administrative searches randomly, where it gives us authorization to provide that. We must be sure we do it in a nondiscriminatory manner, and it's minimally intrusive. So, that's a very important part of that. And then we will also use this guidance with notification to parents and posting of signs in our buildings, just to make sure people know that it's a weapon-free, gun-free zone, and that there are metal detectors on site, and that's required with this policy. So, we have that covered. On page two of the policy, it talks about the random checks a principal may conduct, and that may be done at any time in the day. So, you could randomly pick five students and have them come down and perform that, or you can do it when you have suspicion or rumor or something that may indicate that a student may have a weapon. One piece that we did add was the part in italics on page three, and this came through a discussion with Mr. Hunt, with his law background, and we did, I worked with our school board attorney to vet this information out, where it gives us some guidance if we have an individual who may be in a wheelchair. And how we address that, our attorney said that this meets that, and we want to be sure that there is no discrimination, and we don't see that person. We also protect their health information as well. So, we covered that piece, and then also, if there's someone who has an implanted or attached medical device, such as an insulin pump, defibrillator, artificial joints, pacemakers, or hearing devices, and it gives us some guidance there. We do rely on that person to notify us if they are selected to say, hey, I do have this implant or something, and then go to a private location with someone of their gender to be sure that they don't scan that area where it may cause problems with that device. So, I think we covered all that. Is there any, are there any questions with that policy? Does that look suitable?
Okay.
So, that is the first policy. I'll just go ahead and do all three.
Scott, did you say that parents will all get some type of copy or?
We will be required. One is to post signage. Two, it'll be on our websites with our policy, and then three will be in our handbooks. And one other piece of that is we'll notify parents each semester. So, we'll do a notification. More than likely, it'll go through, let's say, Mr. Judd's parent newsletter. So, we'll have language that all of our schools will provide as well. So, there will be quite a bit of notification, so.
I think that's good, just for the purpose of the school safety concerns. I mean, they know that we're paying attention, we're working on it.
It's pretty clear our signs need to state weapon-free zones, and that metal detectors are on site. So, we must include both of those with our signage. So, we'll get those ordered and posted at each of our locations in the visible area. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, on policy 6.07, it's the community use of school property, and as a reminder, this came through some discussion with the board at one of our meetings, and it really goes back to page three of this policy, and it's the use of buildings, and then the waiver of the fees. And what this does is it takes that board approval piece away. It's as an administrative function that you're giving my office permission to approve, and it also provides an appeal process that would go to the board in writing if that person did not agree with my decision. So, that's really the only language change there. So, it takes some of the yearly things, such as Joanne's gymnastics. It allows me to make that approval without board approval. So, that gets the superintendent's office permission. Finally, policy 6.17, registered sex offenders. Just the first section on that in red, it identifies and lists the different serious sex offenders. And so, we included that. It was a change in Indiana Code, so I wanted to be sure that was included in our policy, and it lists all those different convictions for those offenses. So, that just gives us more clarity if we have to deal with such a situation. And that is it.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to seek a motion to approve the board policy 5.29.1, 6.07, 6.17.
I still move.
Thank you, and do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the calendar year-end procedures. Now we'll move on to the calendar year-end procedures due to HB 1009 fund changes. Ms. Cullen-Tallett.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. This evening, I'm asking permission to pay any expenses that occur between the December board meeting, the December board docket, and December 31st that would come about from the general fund, the transportation fund, capital projects, and bus replacement. This will allow us to clear up as many purchase orders and use as much of the funds that we've committed in these funds before they cease to exist on December 31st, and we move to the new education and operation fund, so.
So this is just a cleanup situation, basically?
You're presenting a claims docket tonight, and we'll release those checks tomorrow. This is, you're giving me permission to pay things December 31st or late December that have been encumbered on purchase orders at this time to help close out those funds. They will appear on your January claims docket.
Okay.
Or will be given to you in January to consider.
But they will be paid in this, they will be paid.
But they've been paid in December.
But because of the change in the, we need to get them paid before the end of the year.
I would like to.
Okay. Okay. I would like to seek a motion to approve the calendar year-end procedures due to hospital 1009 fund changes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to the approval of the bids for the CHS Activity Center. Ms. Cullen-Tallett.
Thank you. And my chums here, our friend from Fanny and Howie, we opened bids last Thursday, and then we worked all weekend assembling them, I'm sure, and vetting through them. This evening, we are presenting to you just the base bid components for the general construction, the mechanical plumbing and fire, and the electrical pieces. There are bid alternates. You have a copy of the bid document that we're going to have to work our way through. We'll have an add-on at least of about $250,000 once the final floor is selected. But there are also some potential deducts related to the metal plate, I believe, and also potentially related to temperature controls. So the number of windows we decide on, those will be brought back probably at the December or January meetings are the expectations for those alternates to be considered. But these are the base bids, which is the bare minimum that we can go with to get the project going. All of the recommendations this evening are for the lowest bidder. So for the general construction, it's Brunz-Gutwiler of $2,792,000. Koch Mechanical of $1,234,000. And Buscher Electric?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not familiar with it. $520,000. We have done work with Koch in the past. I think Brunz did the Greensburg project that we went down and looked at. So we were hoping they might get on this. We had pretty good interest. We've done all contractors. We had three.
Four.
Four. I'm sorry. Mechanical and plumbing, we had three. And then we had two for the electrical piece. You know, I mean, I'm going to tell you, construction costs are going up. Mike sent in us articles to read about how construction's gone up, labor costs are going up, metal pricing through the roof, so.
It's interesting that Burglar was the most experienced. No surprise there.
I think with Brunz-Gutwiler, they're out of Batesville, and they worked with Fanny and Howie quite a bit. And they had by far the most competitive bid. And so Mike went through and vetted out all the line items, and had to make sure that it covers all of our needs in that construction piece. So we were a little, wow, they're considerably lower. But Mike assured us that he's worked with them, you know. So if there's anything else you would like to?
I'll just add something to that comment. With regards to Brunz-Gutwiler, obviously, when you have a bid that's that much differential between the next bid, you anticipate some challenges there. They had, so we were concerned too, but we also want to make sure that we don't lose them as a bidder, because that's a big deal. And you can see the price difference between the two. And we spent most of the day Friday going through numbers with them. They missed a couple of minor things, but nothing to be alarmed about. And we double-checked and crossed our Ts and dotted our Is with regards to make sure that they had all the pieces and parts covered. So we've had a great relationship with Brunz in the past, and they had, they self-perform more work than anybody else. So that was their advantage.
So they don't sub out them?
They still sub out some work.
Like their masonry?
Yeah, they masonry.
But for the most thing, they do their own work there.
Yeah, they do a lot of, all their concrete work, all their masonry work. So while other contractors may sub that out. And just so this group knows, I know that at times, they take, they spot check themselves. So they take bids from concrete work and masonry work, so they can compare and contrast it to their own estimate, and make sure that, you know, they don't have big holes there. And a lot of general self-performing people do that. It's almost like a construction manager at risk or something like that.
So what happens, or how, what happens when some projects have cost overruns? So?
Well, what would happen is, we would come back, right now, we're not, we are good. We could, should, the more I've looked at this, the more ecstatic about these numbers. And if there were such things as cost overruns, we would actually look at what we call VE items, valued engineering, and issue those as a change order to their contract. So we have to award on base bid, and then we'd have to come back. And at a future meeting, let's say, we found another flooring material that was more competitive than the ones we had listed, and you as the owner have the right to pursue that floor. So let's say it saves us $100,000, we would add, we would add that by deduct change order, the original floor may have been $200,000, and you would see, we would do a deduct change order to the contract sum.
If they lock in these?
These, yes.
They're locked in.
These are locked in. Now, we can, let's say you get a donation of, let's say, an example of just a sign or something like that. You can actually, we can deduct change order, that piece of materials out of the scope of work, and put that in. For the group, we'll get a scheduled value. So what happens is, part of them starting construction, we have a line item for every piece of material, cost of materials there is, and the labor associated with that. So down the road, when we issue a payout, we know if they complete all the masonry, well, then they should have been paid for both the material and labor. So you know that you're not overpaying them, not underpaying them. So, but we have, lockers would be another example. We'd have a line item for lockers. If we decide not to put any lockers in there, we know what the cost of that locker's worth. We don't get the overhead back from their profit in their bid to install that locker, but we got the material and labor. So there's, so that's how you recoup that if that ever became.
But pretty much, these are guaranteed contracts. The prices we have here are not going to go over. They can go under with deductions, but they're not going to go over these prices. Is that correct?
Well, let's, I want to, let me state what I think's the obvious to me. These are, these are the lowest prices there is. And there may be some unforeseen's in the project that we have to add scope to fix. Let's say we have a batch of bad soils. Now, for this group, we have already built in about $80,000 in contingency in these numbers. Now, anything above that, we'd, you know, obviously, we'll have to look at. There are certain things as unforeseen's, but we want to believe, as perfect as I am, as perfect as my team is, my wife will tell you I'm not even close. So, but, we have an extremely good track record. You know, when those come up, I'll stand in front of you and explain those. Some will, some will say, oh, great job, Mike. And others will say, what was your team thinking? So that's how it works.
So we don't have a floor in it yet. So we know we have to do an add-on, an alternate for the flooring, and that will be coming back.
Yeah.
For the wood flooring?
Which we're talking about?
$200,000, $250,000.
Yeah. We have the wood floor in the project. We don't have the rubber floor around the wood floor. The reason-
What's the mondo? Is that that one?
That's a rubber floor.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, I don't get it.
It's alternate.
It's an alternate.
It's below the base bid.
Oh, okay.
But there are some controls that maybe we're going to probably see a reset will offset that. That's what he's saying. There may be some decreases that will-
We're working very hard to make sure we balance that out for you. And more to follow on that. But honestly, I think that we should all be very pleased with the results.
Yeah, I think you have the numbers up there. It comes up to just what you have here, with like four, like four, five, or four, six million, something like that, so far. But by the bids we have here today.
That's correct.
Okay. You mentioned soil samples. I know you're just using that as an example. Do you, and I see we're on the hill here, so you're probably not going to run into the issue. But I know in my experience, I ran into, well, we're not really digging a basement either, so. But I just think about those.
And you should. I do too.
Some small-town eye doctors thinking about it, I'm sure some. You know, full-fledged engineers, by years ahead of me, so.
Maybe not a lot years.
I don't know.
We are constantly amazed about bones that we find, you know, and, you know, so.
Yeah.
Bad example, I shouldn't say that. My wife's a Billson at the Jordan Museum, I shouldn't say that word.
It's a new construction, so there's no skeletons hidden in the walls with this one.
Well, we are connecting a couple to the existing buildings too, so.
You never know.
Not Debbie Downer, I'm a positive person. So I'm thinking we got this covered.
Just thanks for your hard work, Mike. Take care of us best you can.
I'm in management. It's my team anymore. I'll just take credit for their work, so.
But we appreciate it. Okay. So now I would seek a motion for approval of bids for the CHS Activity Center.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the approval of the additional appropriations to the rainy day fund. Ms. Cullen-Tallett.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. We had a hearing on this last month, and it was advertised this evening for your consideration, is the additional appropriation resolution of $2.5 million from the rainy day fund to complete the solar panel project. We did receive numbers just today. They had some difficulty, the individual, the solar project individual with Duke had been out for a few weeks. And so they had trouble wrapping all of that up. But anyhow, right now, the project looks like it's $2,487,000 and some change. So right at that $2.5 million mark. Our attorney has reviewed the contract. Scott and I are reviewing her final comments on it. We received the guarantee information from Performance Services, the amount they're willing to guarantee. There were some charges related to their monitoring that over the next 20 years. I'm sure I'm not going to get anywhere, but I was a bit snarky in an email back to them, that, you know, they told us we'd save about $200,000 a year. They're willing to guarantee $160,000 of that. And they want to charge us $2,800 a year to monitor our energy savings over the next 20 years. I'm sure that's standard protocol, but it's just a little bit bitter in my mouth, you know, so.
Did you get a response to your snarky email?
No, because it was after 4:00 this afternoon. So just putting it out there to them, you know, we are looking at it. It just, it is what it is. I mean, if I were in their industry, I wouldn't guarantee the full amount I say you're going to save either. But they just need to be a little more realistic. So we'll finish reviewing those documents. We already have your approval. We're going to, we're going to save, obviously, in our electric costs. So we do want to continue to proceed with the project. But we are trying to do our due diligence.
We're still looking at a very significant amount with, you know, just in their guarantee for 20 years. Was that 3.5?
$2 million, even at $160,000.
And then anything beyond that is, that's their minimum guarantee, but legally.
Why did it change?
Well, they're not going to guarantee 100%. You know, it's got all these other factors.
That's how they presented it.
I know.
It's just, it's-
Part of it was the rate amount that they're using was 5 cents less, I think. Is that right? Is that what I read? Than what they originally thought. So they were off to 5 cents. But over 30 years, they'll probably well above $5 million.
Yeah, I realize it's still a savings, but it seems like it's a misrepresentation of the information to a body that's making the decision about moving ahead with the project, and you base it on the information you receive. Right? That's how I would look at it.
You know, my takeaway is, if we do another one, not necessarily solar, what's your guarantee going to be? If you're projecting this, what's your guarantee going to be? So you ask that question on the front.
You mean asking a different question.
On the front. Yeah, you say we're going to save this, but if, you know, when we get, when we get to signing the documents, what's your guarantee going to really be? So, you know, we can all learn from that and put that out there.
Finds me the cable companies.
Well, it's just, you know, it's like you buy a car, and they say, you're, you're going to get 200,000 miles out of this, but we're only going to warranty it for 100,000.
Right, yeah.
Realistically, we'll probably get the two. So in theory, we could see the savings they told us, but they just-
They won't guarantee.
They won't guarantee.
Because I'm still optimistic that we're going to see the savings.
It's a good deal.
Especially with the financing way we're doing it.
I think it comes down to, I agree with Leslie, what you asked, what you said, but integrity of their company has to be considered, you know. And like Jane said, the standard operating procedure is probably going to have some margin in there that's not going to meet what their guarantee, not guarantee, but estimate.
We're going to save a lot of money for our district over this next 30 years, so.
They are very highly regarded, though.
Yeah.
They are the go-to for schools. They are well-respected. I have many peers who've used them, who've been more than satisfied. The middle school project, that's slick and smooth. We didn't have hiccup one, so.
We just, we just value transparency.
I guess.
Especially this administrative team that values transparency, and this board values that, so.
That's right.
Okay. But thank you. And I do like the reminder that we are going to save loads of money, and that this is really a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Okay. I will seek a motion to approve the additional appropriations to the rainy day fund for the solar project.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware, suggestion, ideas, and/or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we'll move on to the report items. Superintendent Discussion Group's reports, Principal Directors' reports.
I just want to say, thank you to the board. We're excited to have you at the board. In many ways, softball field looks great. Hope to get a new school board quickly. We're supposed to be starting the slabs for new baseball batting cages and softball batting cages, so.
Dugouts wrapped up for softball?
Army.
Dugouts wrapped up for softball?
Dugouts are wrapped, gutter is on.
Great.
It's good. We've got a few items to fix up, so we're excited to move forward.
Great. Good to hear from you, Brett. Director of Human Resources report, Mr. Serkew.
Just one report. You know how we work really hard to try to improve in this corporation? Well, Kim and I have been given a directive to meet with the 40-plus new teachers that we hired this past year as a first semester review on what we can do as a corporation to make them be better at their jobs. So we're in the process now of interviewing these 40 new teachers that we have. And I had my first one this afternoon. It was really pretty- It was really pretty exciting. A 15-minute to 30-minute interview, three or four questions. We ask them on what we can do to make their job better. What could we have done? You know, how are things going? It's going to be very interesting. I'm looking forward to the other 39, so.
Is this the first time that this has taken place?
Yeah.
I like this idea.
I hope they're not going to be afraid.
Yeah, we love it.
We love it.
It's really good.
I hope they're not going to be afraid.
Yeah, we're being directed.
Well, I like the way, well, I like the way you're asking the questions too. Like Lori said, she's hoping they're not going to be afraid. But when you're phrasing it, that what can we do differently?
Right.
Because we don't always know.
And I will say, I sent them an email to invite them to come and I thought, well, they'll never answer.
They do.
Boom, right away. They, you know, yeah, they'll be there.
I think it's a way to support them as well, to know that we haven't forgotten about them just because they got here, went through New Teacher Academy and now they're in place. It's not like, ah, now you're just part of a little group.
And a way to retain them.
A way to retain them.
Yes, exactly.
Support.
Good.
Support because they feel like they're being listened to and they're the rookie and they're still getting some input. That's, that's great.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. Director of Finance report, Janie.
Couple quick things. The first one is we have already received our 1782 notice and our budget is complete. Minor change, had to do a reduction to the operation fund of just under $39,000. And I don't even remember. I thought the word "two" changed, but very minor.
Good.
Yeah, pretty good for estimating. I'm really happy that they got it to us this quickly. We'll be able to move forward and get all the accounts assigned for the classified staff, the secretaries to be able to get requisitions shortly after the first of the year. And the second thing is, I just really want to thank the board for how we treat our classified staff here as equals. That is not done at all school corporations. And so it's, it's really, I appreciate that you do that and I appreciate being a part of that, that you value those people as much as the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Okay, we'll go on to the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Okay, just have a couple quick things. First of all, I want to thank Magic Moments. They brought their little ones over for us to do trick-or-treating and Mike and I really get into that. So we get to dress up and get to share that day with them.
Just the two of you dressed up?
Well, we're trying to convince the other side to dress up, but they don't necessarily always like our things.
Did you see my paper Christmas tree?
Yes, sure did. So, but it's nice for us to get an opportunity. I miss the kids and so having them come over is a great, it's a great.
I was dressed up as a superintendent.
Gee, that's a good one.
Mike was a monkey.
Also, it is American Education Week and I want to take this opportunity to recognize all the outstanding contributions that our staff, that they put into each other day. Our teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers, board members, support staff. Like Anne said, it does take a village and I'm just really proud to be part of a corporation where everybody just jumps in and does what they need to do for the best interest of kids. And I think that's important to recognize. I know that sometimes we all get busy and we forget to thank those people for all of their hard work. And I just want to take this time to make sure that they recognize how much we appreciate all that they do. What's that from?
All right. And Superintendent's report, Scott.
Thanks, that was on my list too, with the American Education Week. So I second all that Kim said there. Want to thank our schools that had the Veterans Day programs. I made it to most of those. And I'll tell you, there were some veterans with tears in their eyes. And every time I heard taps and the twinkle, that just, it gets me every time. And so I'm just really proud of our schools, our music teachers and our kids for... I'm proud to be in a district where we celebrate our heroes. I think that's very important. We make sure our kids understand the importance of that. Congratulations to Anne and Chris on their election wins.
He was close. Nail bodies.
There was a picture I saw Chris at the election site watching the returns.
Really? Oh, boy. That's with my twin.
Thank you for investing in our kids and for putting yourselves out there for another term. I appreciate that, so.
And welcome.
Superintendent Dennis Perkins, he'll be joining us here soon.
We introduced Dennis very well, taking him to, willing, taking Dennis to a restaurant as his first foray with the board. Good move. Really good move. He enjoyed it.
And then last, Mr. Judd and I will be driving up together this Friday to India and it is the State Teacher of the Year recognition. And so we have Sherry Fegley from Eastview and Gabe Nobby from the high school. So that's a really nice evening to recognize the best of the best in Indiana. So we will head up Friday evening and enjoy that night. Mr. Small will be heading up, I believe, with Mr. Fegley. So just a nice night to honor those recognized and to be a part of that. It's a really nice celebration, so, with that, I will...
All right. Well, thank you. Anything for the good of the cause tonight?
I'd just like to recognize all the grandparents in our community that helps with their grandkids, getting them to school, getting them home, raising them, helping them with their homework.
We just had Grandparents' Day in some of the schools.
Well, I just hear more and more and see it in my own family, but just want to recognize grandparents.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, we wish you all a good week and a good Thanksgiving as we approach that holiday and hope everybody stays safe. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.